Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. I'd like to stand salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, on the agenda in the caucus meeting, honoring the citizen.
I'd like to call up Chief DeBella tonight. He has a presentation to make to one of our local residents this evening.
To the mayor committee, thank you for having me this evening. I have the distinct privilege to present a civilian award to someone from the Lacy Township Police Department. Before I do that, I just want to say a few things. So January 14th of this year, about 11:30 at night, Danny Charcos and his mother Linda Charcos were at home, the residents here in Forkett River. At the end point where Linda sort of having a lot of trouble breathing, she was in respiratory distress. Danny called 911. He remained online with the 911 operator and answered the questions that they had. Ultimately, the call was transferred to us here in Lacy and Officer Barlow and Paul Bussori responded to the residents, along with members of Lacy Township, First Aid. I do have Captain Edisiewan Ray as representative from the First Aid Squad. Upon their arrival, they provided air and air. Two of them, she was hesitant, didn't want to go. So Danny spoke to her, talked her into going to the hospital, as well as the First Aid, paramedics, and police officers. Ultimately, she did go to the hospital and she did get the treatment, medical care that she needed. Now, I did speak to Linda after the incident, and while I was talking to her on the phone, she told me that if she didn't go to the hospital, if Danny and the First Aid members didn't talk her into going to the hospital, and this is her own words, the doctors told her she could have died, she could have passed on. So I'm very, very proud of Danny for, you know, for what he did, for making that phone call. I also have two of his former schoolteachers here with us this evening. I have Robin Anderson, Sir Dan, and Randy. This is why I have them here tonight, if it's some years back, they were very instrumental in teaching Danny how to dial 911 and what to do when he does that. So everything comes together. Believe me, I appreciate what you guys do every day, I appreciate teachers, and this is a prime example of good teaching here. So thank you very much for that.
Glad we did it.
Yes, we are.
I have a civilian award to give to Danny, but I also have a certificate of recognition. So I'm just going to go ahead and read it. Danny, you want to, do you want to come up?
I'd take that.
Certificate of recognition presented to Daniel Charcos. On January 14th, 2018, at approximately 11:32 PM, Daniel Charcos, while at his home in Forkett River, discovered that his mother was in severe respiratory distress. Without hesitation, he dialed 911. His actions ensured that his mother was provided immediate medical care, which ultimately saved her life. On behalf of the Lacy Township Police Department, Mayor Giuliano, and the entire committee and staff, I hereby commend you with this certificate of recognition. The Lacy Township Police Department citizen recognition. So we're doing our cop card program this year. We're set to have Meet the Officer Day with the middle school on June 2nd. So this is a poster of all the cards. The three of us have signed our names to the back of the cards. And I hope that you would come on Janu-, I'm correcting, on June 2nd for Meet the Officer Day, so all the police officers here can sign this for you. Want to have your file, Russ coming up?
Yes.
I've known Russ a long time, so it's purpose. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Giuliano.
Thank you, everyone. We want to take some interest. We got the chief, thank you Russ.
Watch the water, guys.
Thank you.
Gary, let's talk about those that are challenged in height. Those that are going through challenges.
I'd just like to know what it's like down there.
I always tell them that they need to go.
I have to fly that way.
My people can be there for you.
Here, this is for you.
I'm sure my guys are, I'm sorry to cut off work.
Thanks to see you, Russ. Congratulations.
It's good to see you.
Very well.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Very well.
Good job.
Thanks, Russ.
Any comments from the committee?
Yeah. Hey, listen. Danny, on behalf of the committee, I want to congratulate you. I've known your mom and dad many, many years, and I know when you're a little tiny guy, you know, you used to be very active at that point in time, but what you did that day had such an impact on not only your family, but on the people in this community to see, you know, you stepping up and taking care of your mom like that. So you did a wonderful thing. I know everybody here is very, very proud.
Yeah. Anybody else? Steven, Peter?
Danny, I just want to offer my congratulations to. It's an incredible thing you did, and I also want to just mention the teachers again to really, to drive home the 911 calls. Very impressive, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Keith?
Yes, sir. Danny, like they say in baseball, and that's just a home run. I mean, you may, well, you heard the chief, have saved a life. So all the young people that are listening now in TV land, listen to the teachers, and really appreciative of the teachers bringing that message home from 911, because I, you know, you can't reiterate that too many times, because you never know when you're going to need it. And grateful for the teachers, and grateful for Danny. So thank you, and well-deserved award.
Tim?
Yeah, I just think that extraordinary is the word that comes to my mind. And I think it's a true sign of love, when you do something like that, and you see somebody you love in distress, things go through your mind, and sometimes you just panic, but for to pick up the phone and dial 911, stay on the phone so that our emergency people can get there and take care of the situation, that's just a sign of love. Thank you.
Well, it leaves it up to me. And I think how I feel, Dan, you know how I feel toward you, I've known you a long time. I was lucky enough to have your mom to teach my children to grow up, and the rest of the teachers in Lacy Township. Thank you very much. Teaching Dan that 911 saved a very important person in our life, no doubt. She's been a rock. We do things outside of everything, and I really appreciate your friendship. The Charcos' family, there again, you should be proud. He's a fine young man. I've talked to him many times. We follow a little bit of the racing, right, Dan? Right? We keep that Truax guy going down there in Manahawken, right? But no, thank you to all. The police department, there again, I say it from the heart, you know how I feel toward you. We got the best of the best here, there's no doubt in my mind. And the EMFs, same thing. I'm so proud to be your mayor and a township committeeman in this town, I really am. It touches me in everything you do, and I'll say it one more time, we do have the best of the best in Lacy Township. Nobody can compare to it. Thank you.
I just want everyone to know that I fought for Danny to go to the hospital, but my concern was him going to the hospital leaving Dan, some people are taking care of him, especially over the night hours. And when the officer's got a figure, Julie says, Ms. Charcos is Julie, and she's a former student of mine, and she says, to stand at the cell phone, I said yes. She says, can you contact his father? I said yes. She said, I'll contact Mr. Charcos, and I'll wait at your house until he comes. And I said, well, he lives in Wayr Town. And she said, I'll make sure your house is locked up. And I said, please have him take my doors, too. I heard this, little problem. So these two officers went over and above their duties, just to make sure that my child was safe, until his father was able to come and get him from Wayr Town. And for that, I really appreciate why you did that, though.
Where do we go from here?
Yeah. So where do you go after that?
Another good one.
Second we have on our thing, proclamation for an Eagle Scout.
Kyle, would you like to stand up for us, please, at the microphone? Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is one of the highest honors a member of the Boy Scouts of America can receive, and whereas only 4% of all Boy Scouts receive this honor. Whereas in order for Kyle Kimmel to receive this rank, he built and installed 12 bat boxes at the Ocean County and Shenandoah Parks in Lakewood, New Jersey, to increase the bat population and to provide natural pest control. And whereas Kyle Kimmel, his scouts and leaders of Boy Scout Troop 42 donated approximately 184 hours to complete the project. Whereas Kyle received donations from Home Depot, Square Deal, Mountain Millworks, 84 Lumber, Tuckerden Lumber, and Sherman Williams. Whereas his efforts have been cited by the President of the United States, the Governor of New Jersey, the State Senate, this General Assembly, the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders. Whereas the Mayor and Township Committee wish to commend and congratulate Kyle Kimmel on receiving this high honor. Whereas the Mayor and Township Committee would like this accomplishment and dedication of this young individual to be an example for all those involved in scouting, and thank him for a project well done. Now therefore I, Nicholas Giuliano, Mayor of the Township of Lacy, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, honor Kyle Kimmel for his outstanding accomplishments and encourage other scouts to follow in his example. Mayor, would you like to present?
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Can I say something? Yeah, I'll say something. Kyle, let me congratulate you. It's not an easy award, because I'm the father of an Eagle Scout, and I know, Mom and Dad, congratulations to. It's not easy. It's not easy at all. And just so that you know, Kyle, my son went into the Air Force, he immediately had a stripe on his arm, because they don't give them until you get out of boot camp. He got one, he actually had two when he came out, with a little extra money. And we just got a solicitation for a company to come in and do some work here in Lacy Township, a big company, and the biography of the president of that company at the very end, you know what he had down there? Eagle Scout. I'm telling you, that award is going to open doors you can't even imagine it's going to open for you. Take it proudly, get that Eagle, you'll get an Eagle magazine, you can follow it. It comes to our house, I don't know why it comes to our house, but it does. And it's amazing the people and the accomplishments that they've achieved in their life, and they all refer back to the Eagle Scout and the discipline and everything else like that. So I congratulate you.
Kyle, I never reached that level in scouting, believe me. I'm standing here looking at all the badges you have, and I know how much work goes into each one, so it's tremendous amount of work that you put in to accomplish what you've accomplished. Timmy, I know, is so proud of his son, you know, what he accomplishes as a scout, because he talks about it all the time, not only in these meetings, but you know, outside with all the stuff that he's involved with. And it is truly something that, you know, not only yourself, but your folks have put in hours and hours and hours to accomplish. But, you know, we're very, very proud of you. You know, we're so fortunate in this town to have a lot of young men that come before us that, you know, really stay with scouting. You know, we know the program is so good in this town, and they stayed with it all the way through the process, and they go off, they, you know, they become very successful. And, you know, don't forget us, come back, you know, we need, you know, successful people here in town too in the future, so I wish you all the very best, but you know, it's a great, great accomplishment. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm really, every time we have a scout, it never, ever gets old, and you never take it for granted. I think part of the reason that we have the caliber of young people we do in this town is because we have so many Eagle Scouts and Girl Scouts as well. You all lead by example, and then people, I think, start to emulate some of the things and some of the leadership that you display out and about in the town. It's pretty emblematic when you look at all of our emergency forces, and different people that have deep roots in this town. A lot of them you can trace back to scouting, and if they weren't actually scouts, then they have the practices, and they've internalized that, and they show it and they bring it every day, whether they're students or in the workforce, or as Tim talked about, in our military. So, so much to be proud of. We can't have enough scouts, and I hold them in very, very high regard. I know how important your example is, because the young people look up to you. So thank you for what you did. I, like Committeeman Quinn, didn't get as far as you and the scouts, so I'm so glad that you did, and God bless you and your parents as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo those same comments. You should all be very proud of your son, and certainly the amount of time that you guys put in to get him there, it's a lot of time for the parents, so congratulations all.
Same here. Congratulations. I know you're going to do fine things in the years to come, and to your parents, thank you. I know it takes a lot to do, but look at what you got, a fine young man. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. Kyle, one last thing. How many merit badges do you have?
I'm running out of room on that thing. I don't know how many.
I think there's, what, 120?
Yeah, so, yeah. I think it just exceeded 120.
Yeah. And they're not easy to get, as you, when you first get in there, they're kind of easy, you got to build a fire, and set a camp and stuff like, but the ones as you get older and move up are a lot more difficult to get and take a lot more time. That's an amazing record, so you should be very proud of all those things.
Are those two gentlemen part of your troop?
That's what I was going to say. No?
No. Oh, okay. Are you here to receive a badge tonight yourselves? For, no, you're just...
St. Albi.
Wow, that's wonderful, I commend you for that.
It's for the one merit badge requirements, probably.
Exactly right. You're a scoundrel, yes.
Community.
Well, it was a good night to attend, obviously. You see what your future holds, then.
Best of luck to you guys, you did a great job.
Three.
Can we get number three?
Request to post signs, Rotary Club of Forkett River.
As you all know, the Rotary Club is hosting their annual doggy derby event on the Jones Road Field on June 3rd, and they are looking to post signs throughout the community one week in advance of the event. I just need a motion authorizing the approval of that.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have nothing else to add on to this agenda, does anyone else?
Yeah. You two gentlemen, what troop are you from?
52.
52. And how far along are you guys?
I'm light. I'm also light.
Refresh me, how much may more step to Eagle?
The last one.
Last one.
Oh, so you'll be here in the near future?
Yes.
Did you pick projects yet?
Yep.
Good.
What are your projects?
I'm doing benches over at Shandale Park.
Okay.
I have a project.
We could use some bat houses throughout some of our parks, because some of them have some now. And it really is good for the mosquito population.
And Kyle can show you how.
There you go.
Well, I can, I like it.
I wish you guys something but the best of luck, and same to you, Kyle.
All right, now we can motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we can go right into township?
We can go right into township?
If any of yous like to leave, you may leave now, we won't keep you all evening.
Good luck, Kyle.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Can we get you some bat cages?
Can you tell me who we want?
Yeah, that was it tonight.
I'm afraid of bats.
You're afraid of bats?
It's a reptile.
But it does help the mosquito population.
I don't have mosquitoes where I live, so I don't wear bats.
Then you don't have bats. That's what they eat.
Yeah, but they, I didn't know.
Before you leave, Peg.
I knew it. He's going to embarrass you.
This is me. Today, usually I don't do this, but today's a very special day for me. Today's my wife's birthday, she's 60 years old.
Did you announce the name?
It's all right. But I have to tell you this, and I'm saying this from the bottom of my heart, you don't look nowhere near 60.
That's because you're married to me.
That's right. And also, May 28th, we'll be married 40 years.
Thank you. Marie, did you have a comment?
Yes, I have a comment. I'm the mother of that.
And there's no way she could be 60 then.
I don't know how she got to that age.
Right. Congratulations. Good night, Peggy, happy birthday.
Okay, we're ready.
All right.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. I'd like to have a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, first reading of ordinance 2018-13, amending chapter 323, vehicles and traffic so as to amend section 323-39.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 323 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled Vehicles and Traffic so as to amend section 323-39 act entitled Control for the Movement and Parking of Traffic on Public and Private Property. Several weeks ago, we had changed the name of, I'm going to call it Gilly Park Access Road, or Headquarters Lane, to R. Kennedy Boulevard. And there was other sections in the code book that referenced Gilly Park Access Road that we now need to properly correct and change it to the proper street name. So that's all this ordinance is doing tonight.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-14, authorizing the financing of the 2018 capital improvements and equipment in progress.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment appropriation, appropriating $1,910,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,423,100 in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof. I'm going to go over the items that we are looking to purchase this year. It will be an acquisition of a fire truck for the Lenoke Harbor Fire Company, a first responder vehicle for the Lacy EMS. A total cost would be $657,000 of that. Acquisition of three non-passenger public safety vehicles, including their radios and all appropriate equipment. Purchase of a public works dump truck with a tailgate spreader and snowplow. Milling and paving of Lakeside Drive East, a portion of that is a DOT municipal aid grant. Replacement of the South Dock bulkhead at the end of the street there that abuts to Lakeside Drive East. Engineering for the Railroad Avenue South Extension, acquisition of easements for the Lake Barnegat Drive and Haynes Street traffic lights. Inspections for the dam safeties, we have three high-hazard dams that are due for inspection this year. Engineering and permitting for the remainder of the South Dock bulkhead. Replacement of the generator at the municipal building, we did receive the generator for free from the law enforcement surplus funds, but we do need the engineering and any mechanicals that need to be hooked up for that, so that's $30,000. Acquisition of a vehicle for the administration department, a pool car vehicle, and a vehicle for the tax assessor's office. Those are our capital items this year that we need the bonds for. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-09, authorizing the municipal cap bank.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA 48, call in 4-45.14.
Second reading, open to the public?
Seeing now, make motion to close the floor, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution 2018-128, authorizing the reading of the budget by title.
Resolution attached with Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing the reading of the budget by title only. So this evening, we have the budget to present to us. As you know, our general appropriations for municipal purposes is at $30,573,650. The reserve for uncollected taxes is at $1,78,350. Total general appropriations is $31,652,000. The anticipated revenues is $17,258,000. The amount needed to be raised by taxes for support of the municipal budget is $14,394,000. Ms. DeBella, do you have anything else to add with regards to the budget before we open the floor to public hearing?
I'd just like to say we're adopting on time within caps, again, this year, 2018 budget, with an increase of about $1.1 million over last year's. For you, the taxpayers, you're supporting this budget with a tax levy of $14,394,000, with the rest being from state aid and local revenue. So what that means for you, the average assessed home, which is about $276,700, will pay an extra $48 annually, so it's about $12 in your tax bills. So that's what you need to know as a homeowner.
Can I have a motion on?
Motion on the resolution?
Yeah.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-11, amending chapter 261, parks.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 261 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled Parks. This is just restructuring the payment for the summer rec program. We're rolling the entire, instead of having three separate fees throughout the summer, we're rolling the entire fee into one fee of $130.
Move it. Second.
Second reading, open it up to the public?
Seeing now, make motion to close the public? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Who seconded that?
Mr. Kennis.
Uh, Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-12, amending chapter 273, property maintenance.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 273 of the Township Code entitled Property Maintenance so as to amend section 2, abandoned and vacant properties. This is relating to those properties that are in list pendants or are going through foreclosure that have been abandoned and are not being properly maintained. There is a registration fee that the mortgage companies and banks now have to abide by here at the township effective July 1st. The first year registration fee is $750, and subsequent years is $1,000 per year until those properties are turned back over, and I'm going to use the word flipped, to residential units. And again, there could be other summonses and items issued on those properties for failure to properly maintain those residences. those residences.
Second reading, I'd like to open it up to the public. Seeing now, make motion to
close the public. More? Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-128 authorizing the reading of the budget by title.
Resolution attached to Lacy County of Ocean State New Jersey authorizing the reading of the budget by title only. So this evening, we have the budget to present to us. As you know, our general appropriations for municipal purposes is at $30,573,650. The reserve for uncollected taxes is at $1,078,350. Total general appropriations is $31,652,000. The anticipated revenues is $17,258,000. The amount needed to be raised by taxes for support of the municipal budget is $14,394,000. Ms. Pabella, do you have anything else to add with regards to the budget before we open the floor to public hearing?
I'd just like to say we're adopting on time within caps again this year, 2018 budget, with an increase about 1.1 million over last year's. For you, the taxpayers, you're supporting this budget with the tax levy of $14,394,000 with the rest being from state aid and local revenue. So what that means for you, the average assessed home, which is about $276,700, will pay an extra $48 annually. So it's about $12 in your tax bills. So that's what you need to know as a homeowner.
Can I have a motion on?
Motion on the resolution?
Yeah.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to open the floor for public comments on the municipal budget.
Seeing now, motion to close the floor. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we can go to the next resolution.
Resolution 2017-129 adopting the 2018 municipal budget.
Resolution attached to Lacy County of Ocean State New Jersey authorizing the adoption of the local municipal budget of the Township of Lacy for the fiscal year 2018. And as those numbers that I previously read, general appropriations for municipal purposes $30,573,650. Reserve for uncollected taxes $1,078,350. General, total general appropriations $31,652,000. Less anticipated revenues of $17,258,000. Amount to be raised by taxes for the support of the budget $14,394,000. And we have already received the seal of approval from the state. They have reviewed and they authorized us to proceed tonight.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-130 appointing a school crossing guard.
Resolution attached to Lacy County of Ocean State New Jersey appointing a substitute school crossing guard for the Township of Lacy. And we are appointing Joseph McKieber.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-131 authorizing receipt of bids for the 2018 capital projects.
Resolution attached to Lacy County of Ocean State New Jersey authorizing receipt of bids for various infrastructure projects, parks improvements, facility improvements, vehicles and equipment in accordance with the approved 2018 capital budget for the Township of Lacy. And those items that we will be potentially going out to bid for this year is the acquisition of a fire truck, first responder vehicle, three Ford Explorers for the police department, one 2018 or newer Peterbilt or approved equal for the public works department, milling, drainage and paving of Lakeside Drive East, South Dock bulkhead replacement, one 2018 or newer Ford Explorer, and two 2018 or newer Ford Escapes. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-132 canceling taxes due to a 100% disabled veterans exemption.
Resolution attached to Lacy County of Ocean State New Jersey authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2018 taxes due on a property granted to 100% disabled veterans exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on block 1640.02, lot 7.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-133 authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution attached to Lacy County of Ocean State New Jersey authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
With noted abstention?
No, for the deposit one?
No, no, just for the payment of township bills.
Okay, and Mr. Quinn and Mr. Kennis, Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-134 authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution attached to Lacy County of Ocean State New Jersey authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $1,037,777.06. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, but I will abstain on H2746.
746. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, with abstention on T0035.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of April 12, 2018.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of April 12, 2018.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in the Forkett River Fire Company for Mark Johnson Jr.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in the Bamber Lakes Fire Company for?
Rihanna.
Rihanna Mendez.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license amendment for the Women's Club of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have an add-on?
I have an add-on. I forgot to put this on the agenda and I apologize. It's Resolution 135. It's a resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State New Jersey provisionally appointing Patricia Reevee to the position of Assistant Municipal Treasurer. Our former assistant treasurer has left and we have been on about a four-week search for a new one, a new person, and we have found Ms. Reevee who will meet our qualifications immensely.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
All right, that's all I have to add on this evening.
That's all. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the first one would be, had the privilege to attend the opening of Little League down there in Clune Park. That's always a lot of fun, those smiling faces and those kids with great dreams. And I had a good time. I noticed that the mayor threw a strike. You know, caught the outside corner though, Mayor. Caught the outside corner.
Look at that.
Go from there.
I think maybe they better sign me a contract.
There you go. There you go. The other thing is, the summer camp's gonna open up and we just took care of that. Get the registration in today because it's $130 up until I think the first day of camp and then it goes up significantly because we have over 700 kids that attend our summer camp. Some substantial changes have been made and so when they come in late, and you can imagine the organization it takes to take care of 700 kids for the summer. And you come in late, it's gonna cost you a little bit more money. And I just wanna talk a little bit about the budget tonight. You know, you come in here and we spend $31 million and you go, wow. Then you realize what we've done and all the things that we're doing and the equipment that we've got to replace and so forth like that and you go, all right, it's not, it's not that bad. But I can honestly tell you, this was, this is a tough budget. We worked hard on it. The mayor led us on this. We didn't agree on everything, that's for sure, but we came to, we came to a conclusion and we went forward with this and I think we're gonna commit a penny and a half?
Yeah.
A penny, a penny and a half on that. So that's, that's really, really good. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee man Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just repeating what Timmy was talking about with the budget, it's always very involved when you get involved in putting a budget together for, you know, a town of this size. And I've been doing it for a lot of years. And this, like Tim said, we hate to have to raise taxes, but unfortunately with a lot of contractual obligations we have and health insurance and everything, it's always something that you try to minimize as much as you can. You know, a penny and a half is, you know, it's an impact, but it's a minimal impact as far as, you know, overall tax increases that we've seen in the town over the years. So I'm very happy with it. But I wanna, you know, certainly give special thanks to our CFO Linda here. You know, Linda was, was working diligently right up until the day we introduced the budget because the state made a lot of changes this year. And unfortunately with the changeover in Trenton with the new governor, a lot of the information that she needed to formulate the budget wasn't coming through. So it was a tremendous amount of extra work for Linda and her office. So you know, you deserve a tremendous amount of thanks and, you know, congratulations, great job done. But also Veronica, I know you're in on all those conversations along with the mayor. So, you know, to Balti is on behalf of the rest of the committee, you know, we wanna thank you, you know, all three of yous for doing the job that you did. You know, as Timmy mentioned, sporting groups in town, all the kids are starting to, you know, get involved in their sports. You know, we had, I know there was softball, baseball, you know, we've been attending different things. Soccer's kicking in, lacrosse is kicking in. And the, you know, the kids are all thrilled. Fortunately, it's like as of today, the weather might start working in our favor for the kids to be able to get out there and not freeze to death on those fields. But, you know, it's a good time of year. It's a, it's a really a lot of fun, you know, to see all the parks starting to be used again. But I wanna give special thanks and, you know, the mayor can bring our thanks back to the public works department for, you know, all the work they did and getting the fields done. Because, you know, this year was a very odd year where they weren't able to get out there early and start getting the fields cleaned and lined and ready for the kids to start. So they worked a lot of extra hours right before the opening days over the last two weeks and they certainly, you know, made the parks look as good as they do every other year. And, you know, we're very happy to see that, you know, being that the weather was such a detriment this year. So Mayor, on, you know, on behalf of the committee, maybe you could extend our thanks to, you know, public works and, you know, they may get a lot directed back there. The only other comment I wanna make is with regards to, the police department, you know, chief was here tonight, with regards to school security and stuff that's going on over at the schools. I know I've mentioned it before over the last couple of meetings, how there are a lot of things going on behind the scenes when it comes to the, you know, schools upgrading the security that they have throughout the buildings. The chief and I have had meetings, we had a meeting yesterday over the schools. And there's a lot of stuff being done behind the scenes. There's a lot of new things being put into place to make sure that, you know, the children and the staff in our school districts are safe and that, you know, God forbid we ever have a catastrophe, that it'll be able to be handled, you know, very well. I know the Alice training program, we had a week and a half ago over at the high school, you know, was a program put out for the parents to kinda see what the staff is going through, was very successful. The school was very happy with the turnout as well as the police department. And it's, if you're not familiar with it, it's a program that the schools or, that the police department and the district is really teaching all of the staff in order to take and protect the kids in the situation. God forbid there's ever an active shooter situation. And it's gonna give the staff a lot more ability to react as opposed to just going in classrooms and locking down the kids in the classrooms. We had, this week, we had folks from Homeland Security going through all of our buildings and the schools, looking at doors, looking at windows, looking at everything that we have that could possibly be a problem if the NED situations ever came up. So I have to, you know, thank, you know, Chief Pabella and Superintendent Wiggly, you know, because they've been working great as a team going through these different items and making sure that the number one priority, you know, for, for the town, not only the township but for the schools, you know, combined, are the safety of our staff and our kids in the schools. So, you know, we're not, we're not gonna get into the details of all the, you know, specifics because we certainly don't wanna put that out there. But I have to tell you, you know, working with the chief as liaison, I've seen firsthand a lot of stuff going on, which is all very positive stuff. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, you are.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Kennis?
Yeah, we, all five of us attended the Little League first pitch ceremony, but I think next year I'm gonna try and petition them to have a home run derby. So. The budget is always very challenging and I also wanna thank Linda for all the hard work she did on the budget. I was gonna talk about COA tonight, but I, because Howell settled, settled one of their COA obligations. But every time I read an article about the economy in New Jersey, other towns, I'll just depress everybody in the whole room. So I'm gonna keep the comments to myself. I'm gonna keep it to myself tonight. So that's all the comments I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you and good evening to everyone in attendance. I've often said up here budgets are difficult things. If I had my druthers treated like my household and have a pay-go system rather than have to bond for anything, it's just not reality. We have needs and we have services that we wanna offer for our people. Many and varied services. That unfortunately comes with a cost, but it goes to the quality of living that we have here. And I think the quality of living is, is a great one in this township. When you look at our parks and our services, our employees, all of our employees, they make it that way. And there's a lot of people that choose to live here. There's a lot of businesses that make Lacy Township a choice destination that you don't see in some other municipalities. So I'm very proud of that as well. I don't think that's by accident. I think that's by design. I'd like to dovetail on a few things that Committee Man Quinn had said. I was in attendance at the Alice training about a week and a half ago. More of Alice presentation for school safety. I could tell everyone in attendance, I've been involved in some of the drills at the county level. And I could tell everyone here that has children in the school or employees or loved ones in the schools. And certainly I'm not gonna take a deep dive into it. But the amount of brain power that was up there that night from the superintendent to all the school administrators, assistant principals, teachers, there's no shortage of about 700 people that are either involved in some level of that training or completed that training. This training is not haphazard. It's evidence-based. So it has borne fruit already as a result of some of these other tragedies we witnessed around the country take place with uncomfortable regularity, unfortunately. But I could, I could tell you that, you know, when you look at Lacy Township, in particular our schools and our police department, there's a lot to be proud of. There is so much going on. Frankly, there's, there's likely items going on that aren't even released to us. And that's the way it should be. That's the way it should be. So Committee Man Quinn referenced Homeland Security. I believe FBI had some input in there as well. And there's what we call AHRs, after action reports, when some of these tragedies happen around the country and we learn from them. Yes, there's a loss of life, but we learn from them. And I can tell you, we're being very progressive here with school safety in Lacy Township. Which takes me to my next point. I often, people hear me, I often compliment a lot of our employees. In particular, I wanna shed some light on our police department tonight. The traditional role of a police officer, I think has gone by way of the dinosaur. Police are asked, there's not only be an enforcement component now, there is to be counselors throughout day-to-day operations. They're asked to be educators. We have a police department that's vested in prevention for alcohol and drugs. We have a police department that deals with social hosting. Parents who post lose the most and different, you know, acting out on different ordinances that we have in this town. We have police that act as first responders sometimes. So there is a variety of roles and I want our residents to know that there's no shortage of public safety initiatives and a lot of them are paid for by grants. At the direct cost to the taxpayer and that's through Division of Highway and Traffic Safety in Trenton. All of our department heads have been very focused on their efforts in going out and garnering those grants, whether it's for, you know, different parts, fire engine over the years and years past, or initiatives like Click It or Ticket, You Text, You Drive, You Pay, different initiatives. And going right into each and every department. Way too many to talk to you about in just short committee comments. Recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities. Roy Grant from, actually our deputy mayor is liaison over there in recreation. So there is a lot going on and the town is kept beautiful by our Department of Public Works. So I just wanted people to know about some of those things. I'll close with a note on myself. I'm looking forward to presenting a safety program with Lieutenant Sullivan at the high school. That'll take place on May 3rd as part of what I do as a responsibility with the County of Ocean at the health departments. I like to get out and engage the different high schools and certainly Home Base is one of them. I was fortunate enough to be a panel speaker at OCC Kane at the annual drug summit this past week. Prosecutor's Office was there. Many chiefs from around the county were there. The amount of work that's doing done, that's being done here in Ocean County with prevention, enforcement and education and different departments really holding their own in all three and stepping out of, like I said earlier, traditional roles, is certainly a lot to be proud of. If you have an opportunity to watch that, please try to. And just wanna hope, hope to welcome spring. Maybe we can do a proclamation to welcome spring and say goodbye to the snow and ask them for all.
Let's not jinx it.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. I'd like to touch on something I forgot to do before. As we honored Dan Chirkos for the award, Kim Howbrock, which was another teacher at the school, she's the one that brought it to our attention and I forgot to thank her. I apologize for that. So I hope when she watches this on TV, she can see it because she was a big part of influence to have this done, along with the rest of the teachers. Leading into that, Monday night, I had the honor to attend the YELFs Americanism Award. I was able to hand out all the awards. We had, they did essays. There was over 800 applicants essays and what it was on was veterans are our heroes. Why? We listened to all of the essays that the three, we had three from Milpon and three from middle school. The fantastic writings. I asked for copies of them so I can give them all to the committee, which they will be getting to me. It was unbelievable what the teachers give upon these children to write these things that were in this essay. It really touched us and I really enjoyed it. So I'd like to thank the parents, the teachers, and of course, the YELFs. We know
Uh, we know what they do in town, and to honor these children and give them the, uh, awards that they did, and they had gift cards for them and everything, I really appreciate that. Uh, opening day, uh, as everybody spoke up here on, on here, that was great for both the Little League and girl softball. Unfortunately, uh, I just made it in the nick of time. I did not realize that girl softball, uh, Committeeman Quinn showed up late too while we were just getting, they were getting onto the field. It was supposed to start at ten-thirty, but instead it started at ten o'clock, so, but we made it in time. Um, yeah, Alice program, as they spoke to at the high school, I just wanna, uh, thank both the Board of Education, the Lacey Township Police Department for their hard work on that program. It's an excellent program. Um, that's about it. My last thing I would like to leave is, uh, I would like to thank, uh, Linda and Veronica for the hard work on the budget. I, I know it takes up a lot, and, and you did an excellent job. Uh, we were all happy to be involved, but, uh, and I'll say this freely, there's always between a successful committee and a successful woman. And in your job, I have to say that. That's what it is, and you did a fine job, great job, all the time, all year long, twelve months a year. Uh, that's all I have. I'd like to open the floor to the public.
Regina Descends of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Um, it's come to my attention that the Caregiver Volunteers of Central Jersey need volunteers